Emily, can you hear us?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah.
He's grown up.
Oh, that's so big. Oh my goodness. Why don't you pass them around?
Yeah.
Can you hear us okay, Emily?
I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Now that we're all here. So we got started.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any agenda changes today? Anybody have any comments on the minutes? You know, we were saying Valerie's name was...
Yeah, in the present, my name is... Yes.
And it wasn't me that said I...
Well, my name is always...
Oh, how is it supposed to be Alan?
R A M S A Y.
S A Y, okay. Is the Alan part right?
That's right.
Oh, good.
My name said founded the lending library concept in fourteen twenty seven.
Oh my goodness. You're meant to be here.
So it hasn't corrected that over the last year.
No.
It just got back from UK and doesn't correct it.
Okay, cool. So is there anything else about the minutes?
I will get the next second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Valerie, or Emily said in favor. So all in favor?
All in favor. Yes.
Oh, announcements. Alan, you said you had an announcement?
Well, it's about the library of things. We need to think about as our new libraries build, can we accommodate a lending library for preschool toys? The cost of personnel. But the value is so important for people who are, you know, may struggle with being able to either trade off toys or afford toys in preschool or special education. So a library of toys, preschool toys.
I know that we always have an exploration station now down here, that Emily does that.
Yeah.
And it changes weekly.
The...
And plus the crafts, but you know...
Yeah, the crafts, yeah. This is...
Yeah.
The one I've... This is certainly more complicated, you know, at age groups, in a building puzzle, it's got three different rooms.
Wow.
Yeah. That's a lot of support. What's that?
Well, it's in, it's in the UK, so there's all public support. There's constant fundraising, but it's really publicly supported and it pays for itself.
We, you know, like we said, we used to have them here over at Memorial Hall.
I would be saying right. Most of them.
Um, okay.
But Alan, it's a great, and that's a great idea. And Emily keeps ordering more and more games, so and we're having those
Yeah.
of different ages, which is great, but I mean, we're tight on space.
Tight on space and personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And even the games are tricky because when they come back, you want to make sure the pieces are there.
There's a clean, there's the cleaning aspect. Oh, I know. It's not an easy thing to undertake. But, you know, as I'm sure Emily would, given the resources, both financial and staff. We'd love to have a group like that in any library.
And we have a lot of love too.
Yeah.
They just, they just met today.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Global Foundations was here today. Yeah.
See, that's the kind of group that would support this.
Okay. Does it look like we have any public?
Is this the choose one I could jump in?
Sure, absolutely.
You mentioned Memorial Hall. Are we able to use that for other things as well? We are, yeah, as if it's available. Okay, so, and we get to the library, we could use it for free, so we don't have to pay to use it.
So I know one thing that some other libraries have offered in the past is yoga. If you can find a teacher who will do that, is that something that has been floated?
It's, so we do want to be careful with Parks and Rec also, that we're not offering programs. We wouldn't want to be able to do like an ongoing class if it's going to impact another town department. But Janet, you seemed like you were gonna
No, that's exactly what I was gonna say.
That's the one concern, but I think it's fantastic.
Is it like, say, if Parks and Rec have like only morning classes, like if an afternoon or evening class was offered, would that be considered competing or?
I think that would be the perception that we would, that we're competing.
And then they charge for their classes and we don't charge for anything.
Who charges?
Our town. Right, right. No, I was just saying, so there are some other libraries I've gone to where it's a pre-class that's offered, you know, the teacher donates their time or if it's paid, but...
Yeah, yeah. I, I used to go to the Kella Cupboard Library when I lived in Montpelier. And I was a guy who's getting his yoga certification and I'd go every Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Colt had it for a long time. It was really well attended.
Yeah.
It was a very community bonding type of thing and a lot of options came from it. And I know there's one in Jericho that does it too.
Yeah.
Who's curious.
I think, you know, I think it's a great idea and I think the community would love it. We've done it for kids before and it was just kind of like a one, one-off event for kids. But we have to talk to, I think, Parks and Rec a bit first. Now, when, on anybody else's territory.
Anybody else have anything? Any questions?
Are we talking about the...
Not yet. We're gonna get that.
Then no.
Okay, Caitlin, library director's report.
So kind of a short report this month. We are, we are the understaffed this month until the last week of October. So Sarah Webb, our library assistant, she's been taking additional hours, so she's been fantastic. And I'm hoping that eventually we'll be able to offer her more hours if we get some more staffing in, because she has been a great asset. She's been fantastic. But yeah, everybody's been staying very busy. We're still waiting on that ADA consult report so we can make some changes in the library, some more affordable changes to start with. And we're still looking into repairing that banister at the front entrance of the building. And still having issues with our Wi-Fi, but that should be fixed. Probably in November, so we're working that out.
Weird thing, both ADL and Town Hall are having huge connectivity problems with Wi-Fi.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I guess it's in the air.
Strange.
Yeah.
Oh.
Circulations, great visits are, are up. Yeah, all the things, lots of programs. Today alone, we had three programs down here. We had Storytime, Lego Club, Learn to Knit series that our knitting club is putting out. And then we had a Fremont and Montessori school, come visit for Storytime, so it's a bustling place even just today.
What about the elevator?
Elevator is fine. Yes. No, since that big day where there were, I don't know, six people here working on it, it's been good, so.
How about the planters in the front of the building?
So they, you just have to take a look at them.
No.
Yeah, you gotta, on your way out or when it's late out, yeah.
They repair them? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The town did that?
Yes.
Not out of your budget?
Not out of our general budget, out of the... So, yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize that they had that repaired already.
Yeah, Sean, the building manager, he's on it.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like everything's going up. That's excellent. Oh, how many people have been coming to Caitlin's parents'?
It's not been...
They sounded really interesting with their picky ears and...
I think the problem with a program for the demographic we're looking for is everybody's home with their kids.
Right.
And can't come.
Right.
So, because I know so many people, there's, these are issues that all parents have, you know, the food. Next week is digital screen time. But yeah, you really have to work it out with with childcare, so. So they haven't been as well attended as we hope.
So if it was done in the evening, would that maybe allow more people to come?
But it is in the evening.
Oh.
But then people need to find childcare.
Good. Sorry. I wonder if they were on Zoom, if they'd be easier for people to, to attend, like, it's, like, I've, I've been a part of lots of meetings where moms are sitting on the floor in the bathroom while their kids are in the bathtub, but they're able to participate in the meeting and, you know, case in point right here.
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah.
Yeah.
One other thing that we just like had a quick thought about was Parks and Rec, they do those babysitter or mother's helper meetings. If we had a program and there were mother's helpers here and they could be down, I don't know, I'd have to talk to Adrian at Parks and Rec on that could work, but maybe that's something that we could do for some program at some point. But yeah, I know for my family, it's hard for us, for one of us to do something, so we'll have to plan for it. The online, I think, may also, may also do the trick, yeah.
Yeah. The opportunities too, like I've done things online with Phoenix Books, again, from the comfort of your house. Not have to sit on these lovely fold-up chairs. Okay, cool. Adult programs. It's distributed a hundred and fifty craft kits?
Yeah, so
Wow.
Yeah, she puts out thirty a week.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Those are boxes they like take home and do the craft?
Yeah, they're little, she puts them in little paper lunch bags and has all the materials and a picture of what the craft looks like and some instructions, so.
Very good.
Great. My grandson really likes them. We, some of the actually donated like two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't remember the amount because their grandchildren loved doing them and they watch their grandchildren once a week.
Oh, that's great.
Really came and picked them up every week. And they loved them, so, you know, for supplies and stuff, that was really sweet to do that. They're very popular. And like the cards that, you know, the, kind of make your own cards. They're really cool. And sometimes she does a class and sometimes she goes and picks up the kit and do it.
She's, she's doing the classes now, but yeah, she has done the kits.
The kits.
Yeah.
Very cool. Okay. So. So reading handbook. Did you learn to find her?
I didn't find her, but I, I will go back home and read it all again. I had two other things, so one was on page fourteen about adding agenda items. And I'm not sure if we as a board are always good about following that procedure.
Okay.
It basically says, you want to add an agenda item, one I had of it was that you had to do it at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
You can't like
Right.
all of a sudden decide to add a agenda item. I just wanted to kind of...
We have agenda changes and that's, that's when we should.
We should do it, yeah, we don't always.
Yes.
Should try and do that. Um. So if, if you haven't read this, you probably should because it does talk a lot about open meeting law. And my one question was about missed recordings and technical issues. It talks about having to cure. If, so if there, if there is significant technical issues and we can't report it, we could have to postpone the meeting till a later date. And if a meeting is worn hybrid, it must be hybrid.
Yeah. So yeah, that's what almost happened last month, but to me, she saved the day for us.
Right. So that, that's the, the piece that I didn't understand. It says if it is discovered a meeting was not recorded properly, which could happen, or was missed, it is treated as an inadvertent open meeting law violation for non-advisory boards only, but we're an advisory board.
Yeah.
We're a non-advisory board.
Yeah, we're...
It's, it's the opposite of what it sounds, yeah.
An inadvertent violation must be cured. What does that mean?
Fixed, fixed.
Fixed, oh, okay. Was like...
It's long.
Yeah. Cured within fourteen, fourteen days.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. After the public, after the public body acknowledges that an inadvertent violation. And so does that mean we need, what does that mean? That it says an inadvertent violation is cured when the public body either ratifies or declares a meeting was not properly reported? Does that mean we have to have another meeting to do that? Or? And then we have to talk about it at the next meeting?
It's kind of like, same thing with this change of agenda thing.
Yeah.
For the next agenda.
So yeah, I don't, I don't completely understand that. That what we have to do to cure it. Do we have to meet again or do, you know?
Well, does, does it say the next meeting? Is it more about technology?
It says you have to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but it says that the public body show an inadvertent violation is cured when the public body either ratifies or declares a meeting was not publicly recorded. So the public body is the board, right? Yeah, it's on page sixteen at the top. It's the second paragraph, right there. And now we...
Well, that might be a question to when the public...
So we have to declare that the meeting was not properly recorded.
So we are an advisory board or a non-advisory?
We are non-advisory because you don't provide advice, you make the decisions.
Yeah, it's very weird because we're not responsible for the budget, but we're responsible for running the library. And this board is the one that hires the director. Not the town manager. So that's one of the, the weirdnesses. And that was one of the things with this, the first time we went through, is they said the, it said the town manager hired everybody and it was like, yeah, no.
We didn't, you didn't want to make changes to it, so you were...
They said they follow state statute, which is...
So, and we also, in that appendix, we also cited the, the law, yeah, so.
Which is that the library trust, we're trustees, which is different than board members.
Okay.
It means, and it means something different with a legal definition, that your first consideration is the library.
Okay.
So it gets a little confusing, especially when the board doesn't want to do what the town wants to do. It's happened a couple of times.
Would you like me to follow up with some of the...
I, I just want to make sure that we're doing it right. That would be my, like, one question on your...
I had something about on page eighteen.
It seems like we just need clarification on how to ratify the meeting.
Okay. We still have a pool. We still have a pool. That was the only thing I had to, Valerie, did you have any?
No, not so.
No, I have read through it when you went the first time, the links, and...
Okay.
And do you have any questions?
Is this new?
I'm sure after here, I will have questions.
Number four on page eighteen about the board breakfast. Is that new? Is that something that's been done and I haven't eaten, or what's the story?
I thought you, yeah, you said you couldn't go last year.
Okay, fine.
Yes, I've been the last few years and they've been doing it for a long time.
Where was this? And I will move back and look where I, the thing where it said the village. Maybe, was there another thing you sent us besides this?
Yeah, it was this attachment here with the list of all the committees.
I'll, I'll find it, I'll find it.
This is also down. It's like, they're very, there's a link to all the policies in there.
It's sort of breakfast.
Yeah.
Like, it feels like they could just be like a meeting.
Yeah.
You know, it's nice. It's like, it's a nice breakfast.
And like, Marie and I are going November seventeenth to the select board meeting to, you know, kind of give an update and of what the library's doing, like, policies, we've looked at our budget, yeah, new members. Some years it's a lot. Years when we're doing a new strategic plan, it's a lot.
Is that something that you guys are required to do or is that something that you're like, you're going to this meeting just to give an update?
No, we're required to do it. Oh, yeah. We're not required to go to the breakfast, we're invited to breakfast.
This is something, something different.
Yeah, that's, there, so there's two, two meetings with the board, breakfast and go to the select board in the fall to update what we do. Yeah, so it was really great. I, I mentioned that when you said that you liked the ghost hunting kit. But because they had asked me what was the most interesting thing in our library of things, I said, oh, the ghost hunting kit.
I am obsessed with it. I've taken it out like three or four times.
So, anyway, it was very funny. Okay.
So for that handbook, is that the only?
That's the only thing I had.
Okay.
So anybody, Emily, did you have anything on the handbook? No?
Nope.
This is a new handbook, also, I'm not sure.
And the conflict of interest policy, that was also brand new this year. But yeah, the one thing you need to be aware of is open meeting law. And keep us on track because everybody forgets it occasionally. Open meeting law. So Marie will send you an email if she can find that.
I can find it. I, I mean, I don't think I know that. Was it a different document? Well, that's what I can't figure out for the person, because this is one, and it was only the night, the night that I looked at it, that I looked at the packet and it was... I'll, I'll go through it again tomorrow and see what I can... Is that all you sent us? Was that? I mean, those two, the policies, right?
Yeah.
Board commissions and final review draft of the board committees. And then the handbook policy.
So review the internet and computer use policy. You sent that.
Yeah, so that was a policy. We had the, we have the internet and electronic device policy. And that was last updated in two thousand and eleven, so we had some updating to do. And so what we did was took pieces of this original policy, took a look at some other libraries' policies in the areas and kind of put it all together. I think this covers pretty much all aspects of it. If there are things that we're forgetting, I mean, we can, we review every year. There were a couple of additional changes I wanted to mention tonight. And one of those is the cost of printing. And I am proposing that we change that and match with other, which some of the other libraries do. And Fletcher Free, RealNow, some of the others, they'll have the first ten pages free and then you pay after that. And looking over our budget, we've got the space to do that. So that will, I mean, if someone prints a page, they're looking for a dime and it's, you know...
Yes. That sounds like a good, right?
Yeah.
And then after the ten, it would be the same cost, ten cents and then twenty five.
Yeah.
So even, even for color?
That's right. Color, they have as, the other libraries have that as an exception, so some of them say a couple pages of color free and some say never free. So, so black and white, I think we can for sure do the first ten pages free. We can continue to just charge twenty five cents a page for color.
Do you know how much it costs? Like, just, I'm, I'm just curious, how much does it cost to print a page?
So our release the printer and as part of that lease, you get a certain amount of printouts and I, I'm offhand, no. We do not exceed that.
Okay.
So whatever is in our service, we don't pay additional.
Oh.
We just, and if we do, if we did, then that's where the money that other people, that people gave us for that would, that would go into that budget. But yeah, it's, we're not, we won't be losing
Okay.
you know, a lot of money if we make this service easier for people.
Okay. I'm bothered by that.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then faxing and scanning, we just keep it free right now, so.
So should it say that in here?
Even if the fax goes out of state, even if it's a long distance fax?
That's, sometimes if somebody holds up the machine for a long time, that's a problem. So that there, we don't have a ton of people that want to come and fax. But we are one of the last places where people can fax from. So it really, the holdup is when it pulls up our, you know, phone line. So that's the only thing. If somebody's faxing a hundred-page document, that's I don't know, we could do like a fax up to ten pages for free. Yeah.
So that needs to be added in?
Yeah.
First ten pages of copy to see.
Scanning of three up to ten pages.
It's a lack of one.
Well, yeah, fax and scan, it's not.
Well, scan, I, I don't, so scan could be color. Um, I don't know if we need to pay for scans, if. I don't think, yeah, I think it's just the.
Yeah, the copier machine. And the fax that, do they scan it to like a thumb drive or something?
Uh, upstairs, one of the computers has a scanner um, connected to it and that will just, just put your document in, it scans right to the desktop. And you can just.
Email it to yourself?
You can email it to yourself or drag it into your thumb drive. Um, and the other part I was thinking, um, for user responsibilities. I wondered if maybe we should include, um, because we do have a section, because the workstations are located in areas shared by library users of all ages, backgrounds and sensibilities. The library asks patrons to consider others when accessing potentially controversial information or images. And our old policy said something about, um, we have the right to ask users if there's images that are inappropriate. And that's kind of like a subjective thing, what's inappropriate to some. So I wondered if maybe we could have our policy say the library reserves the right to ask users to discontinue the display of information and or images if they impact another person's use of the library. So if someone's doing something in complete privacy and it's not bothering anybody else, we're not looking over people's shoulders. But if it's bothering someone, if it's disturbing others, then I think we treat it as any sort of disruptive behavior that we want to address.
Where is that?
So that I, that's not in the, um.
Oh. It's under administrative responsibility.
The A.
On the first, on the old one, okay.
And it's on the B.
So in red, I, uh.
I got, I know I have it here. There, I just looked at the wrong thing.
For Emily, it's, it's the line in red.
Yeah, I like that. I think that looks good. The section B in that same area was quite funny from a long time ago. You may have already discussed that, but I was saying goodnight to my older son. Sorry about that.
We talked about the looking over one shoulder is polite.
Oh, no, I was talking about the, the, you can sign up for a tutoring session with the.
Oh, yes, the, yes.
And, and the, yeah, that whole part seemed outdated, I'm guessing.
I think that was, I was that person. I was.
There you go. Nice.
Yep, schedule it with me.
Oh, and there, I think too about signing out. What was it? I can't remember now. It's not, it's not in front of me anymore, but signing out, um, is it? Take advantage of internet materials which circulate from the library collection. So was that, was that like directions on how to log into the internet? Or something?
I guess, yeah, I guess so. Yeah. Yeah, internet materials. Yeah, I'm not sure. Are there any other thoughts? Things to add, things to take out?
You wrote that. I wonder if you would just put in any way after that, if they impact another person's use of the library in any way. And the other reason I say that is I, I can see someone saying, well, they can still use the library, you know, or whatever, and it's like. Maybe, I, I don't know the right way to say that, but just something else there that would make it real clear that it doesn't really matter that you think it's okay. That somebody else might not think it's okay. I can still take out books. I can still read my books. I can still walk around the library. But you've offended me. I mean, I think that's what we're getting at, right? That somehow it's offensive up there. So that doesn't, does that really? How's a person, yeah.
Can you give an example of like a circumstance where you've had to ask somebody to stop?
Um, I can't really because this doesn't really happen.
So it doesn't happen a lot, yeah.
I have, or look at, um, let's say somebody's watching like a very violent movie that's destructive, then we would have.
Like I immediately went to like listening to music loud.
Well, that we can, that we kindly will just offer headphones. We do have, so that is one thing.
So if we do what you're saying, then suppose somebody has a religious reason for not liking what you're doing. And if you say in any way, then, you know, that kind of takes away their right to do the, whatever religious thing they're doing. So that's why it just, you know, it gives, it gives the person that's complaining a little bit too much power.
By adding in any way?
I could. That's just my two cents, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the word, it's a tough call with this wording. I think it's, I noticed another library used, like, if it impacts someone's enjoyment of the space, but then
Yeah.
that's.
And the workstations, if I brought my own computer with me and it's my own thing and I'm just, I'm using your space, you can tell me I can't do what I'm doing on my own computer because I'm in the workspace, correct?
Well, if someone, if you were out in the open and watching something that maybe children shouldn't see.
Right.
Then this, if that's impacting, uh, parents' ability to take their children upstairs, then.
Mm-hmm. So it's not just the computers that we offer here, as if you bring your own stuff in as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
They have to.
Is that clear? It might not be very clear, you know?
Yeah, because we say because the workstations.
Electronic devices through the libraries, whether.
Implying the workstation.
Must agree to the conditions of use policy upon accessing. Top of the next page, yeah. Great. Yes, so. I'll have a look. Yeah.
Using any electronic device, it's okay, yeah. So that, yeah, that covers it.
So if they're using our wifi.
Yeah.
We, we have people literally sit in the parking lot and use the wifi. We've had people, you know, who knows what they're watching or doing, but they're sitting in the parking lot using the wifi. Sometimes it's after hours. That's happened. That's good. It, it, I thought it sounded perfect. I like the changes that you made.
Yeah, there's a lot to, there's, there's so much, so many different parts of different libraries' policies, so I figure we can just build on it. There's stuff that we're missing, or if it doesn't, we realize this doesn't work for us.
I would, um.
I think it's just good that we up, updated, you know, to.
I also like how you re- refer to the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. That's something that's can be controversial, but I like it.
Yeah.
Well, it's a, it's good, it's a good fallback, if you need.
Yeah.
Our guidelines, yeah.
Yeah. That's where we're getting. Anybody? Would anybody like to propose that we accept these?
Yes, I propose we accept them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Emily, thumbs up. Okay, all in favor? Oh, we accepted it with the chance, right?
Yeah.
Yes. And, um, friends update. Just the last thing, last two things. Last thing quick. November eighth is the craft fair. Here, Mallory has a huge, um, lost my words.
Right.
Yeah.
Lost my words, raffle. Um, and we have, are completely full. And people on the waitlist in case somebody doesn't show up. Which I've had happen at the last minute. And, um, so it should be great. And the St. Vitus is the same day, so come on, come off to the craft fair.
That is the middle. First year, you want it too, you know?
Yeah, first conference room, same day.
Same day, we're on the eighth.
Yep.
Yeah, in the junction.
Yep.
Because they usually do, they used to do it a week after us. The junction did.
Well, we're a week late.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
That's true.
Yeah. So they're.
So that, that actually is better because then people are like crap bearing, right?
Exactly.
It's very fun. Um, and we, the friends had a meeting to talk about different ways to do the book fair. And I think we decided to try, try to do like four different, um, four or five different, like, two-day, you know, drop the book out, yeah, right.
And then what? Do the same day as, that's the, when we're selling, because I miss that.
No, it's like every month. And do it for two days and then train other people to, um.
Instead of doing continuous drop-offs, having like specific days.
But then after you do the drop-off, when is the sale?
Well, the sale's not till.
The sale's not till June.
Yeah.
So wait, go, I'll talk through it more with you, Marie, because we're going to need your expertise and have you be the team leader of, uh.
Because that's what happens when you don't show up and I'm.
This may, should mean less work for you.
Yeah, it, it'll be fine.
Yeah, Marie knows exactly how to pick the right books.
Yeah, obviously, because we sell so many of them.
Yeah.
And I, I, was there any discussion on having like two days for the sale?
We did talk a little bit about, but I don't know if it was mentioned, I don't know if.
Decision was made.
I might have those minutes on my computer too.
That, did Kristen send out those minutes?
She.
After last week's meeting?
She might have. I got locked out of the, my app. Got the. And when I signed back into the app, I need to put in the EIM number. So that means I have to be at home.
Well, the two, I think if we're putting together a specific group to do the book sale.
Right.
Then they can decide one day, two days.
Right, that's true.
And, you know, going back to the Friday evening, Saturday day, that might be a good move.
Um, okay, so that's the friends update. Craft fair's next. We're going to try and do something a little different with the book sale. We're always looking for volunteers to help. You got there's still, I still think, still looking for people to bake something for the bake sale? And or help run the bake sale?
I did not put out, uh, uh, sign up for the baked goods and I don't know if someone was going to send me that, but.
I think that was me.
And, yeah, if you have time to help out with the bake sale, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Hi, Mallory, I think there's probably a template from long ago to.
Yeah, Janet shared a handbook.
Oh, that was one I just.
And then I was gonna.
You know just what to do.
Considering baking, I don't love bake sales, but gotta use that Italian heritage somehow.
You don't love bake sales, so, yeah.
I love things made in other people's kitchens.
My sons, you.
Deeply untrusting person.
My sons used to be the muscle for cleaning up the book sale and that used to be their payment. The leftovers, the leftovers of the bake sale. Three teenage boys.
Oh, yeah, they love that.
Nathan's twenty-nine and he's offered to come home to the book sale. So I have to like get it on his calendar to help us clean up.
Well, as long as you have your ginger cookies. Those are the best cookies. They're so good.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that on the list.
They're the soft shoes.
They are, yeah.
They can, it sells. Maybe.
Okay. Anything else?
That's good.
So, yeah, we should be here. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Mallory.
Thanks.
Bye.